Okay, seeing it's now 10:00 AM, the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all their special assessment and taxing districts for which so, which said Board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. Tony, would you please take the role?
Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Supervisor Short?
I'm here.
Supervisor Sharkey?
Here.
Supervisor Howard?
Here.
Chair Borges?
I'm here.
This time, would you join me in a brief moment of reflection? Supervisor Sharkey, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll do introduction of new employees. Are there any new employees out there?
There is one in the Department of Health and Human Services.
Great.
Good morning. Dorothy Watlow, Deputy, oh gosh, did it again, didn't I? Deputy Director for Social Services. I'm very pleased to introduce to you Tammy Godfrey. She's our new eligibility specialist. She's been a resident for nine years to Del Norte County, Crescent City, and she was previously a office manager for seven years for the Crescent City Glass. So, we're very pleased to have her join our team. Welcome.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
Counsel, anything to report out of closed session?
Yes, Chair. The Board unanimously agreed to join in on the three settlements, the Purdue bankruptcy, the Sackler settlement, and the settlement with eight generic manufacturer, manufacturers. And the case numbers are found on the agenda for today's board meeting.
Great, thank you.
That was opioid settlement.
Yes, the opioid settlements.
Okay, at this time, the Chair requests any deletions, corrections, or additions from the Board members to the agenda at this time. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Seeing none, we will move on and receive brief reports, announcements relative to county and Del Norte programs and projects. Supervisor Sharkey?
I've already apologized to my colleagues, but this will be a little bit long because we had three-week break in between meetings. After our last meeting, there was a group of teenagers that had come and witnessed or observed what we were doing here on the Board of Supervisor. I went and introduced myself to them after the meeting. They ended up being called the changemakers. They're a group of youth who are looking for ways to become involved in the community. They invited me to come speak with them that afternoon to hear some of their questions, to hear some of their concerns. They are teenagers. They really want to have that third place for teens to go, so a teen center or activities for teens. They also had some real good suggestions with regard to more street lighting and sidewalks and that sort of thing. And this is really encouraging because we want our youth to be involved in the processes in our community. So, happy to have spent some time with them. I've had a healthy workforce tack meeting. We are working on employee appreciation initiatives that's going to have a variety of things to look like. It's going to be, you know, ways in which we can recognize employees that have been with the county for five, 10, 15 years, but as well as the day-to-day operations. Oftentimes, we overlook that. We're also looking for a department head workshop and what that might look like, not a retreat. We want to steer away from the word retreat, but for department heads to have an opportunity to interact with each other and come up with ideas that could collaboratively move the county forward. At a visitor bureau meeting, we approved the 2025-26 budget, and we were updated on the metrics. One thing I just want to point out is that for the amount the visitor bureau pays for our consultant, Lulish Designs, we are getting so much bang for our buck. She's doing an amazing job, and you oftentimes don't see the amount of work that comes out with this low of amount that gets put in financially. Shasta County, for example, puts in millions of dollars, and their metrics are not nearly as robust as ours. So, she's doing a fantastic job with regard to our visitor bureau. I've attended the Chamber Board of Directors meeting, spent a lot of time on the opioid litigation meetings. Soon, we're going to be bringing a presentation to the Board, asking the Board to approve the designation of these funds. Currently, we have about $1.2 million of opioid settlement money. We need to create a budget for the Board to review and also designate what department is going to kind of be overseeing the services that the money was intended to be for. So, we're leaning towards DHHS, Public Health, but we certainly will look for board direction, total board direction. I went to the Public Health Community Health Fair. I just want to give a huge shout-out to Anna Porter, who does this remarkable job every year, and I know she doesn't do it alone. I know she is working hand-in-hand with a lot of people that put on this event, but there were so many county agencies there that made me very proud to walk through that. The Youth Opportunity Center, Coastal Connections, The Path, which is our new mobile crisis unit, Public Health was there, OES was there, Veteran Services were there, and they were all sharing with the community the work that they do to make us a healthier community in general. And it was really wonderful to see all of them in one place and showing the services that we as a county do to provide for our community. I went to the Habitat for Humanity Garden Tour. I am on the Habitat for Humanity Board, and the Garden Tour is something that happens every year. It's a small, little fundraiser, but it's more about a community getting together and going and seeing the various things that we have to offer in Del Norte County. I went to LAFCO for Supervisor Wilson. In that meeting, we proved that the restrictions that had been put on for the Measure F for Parks and Recreation, that quarter cent sales tax that has since been terminated or sunsetted, there had had to been a 30% of the money collected be restricted, given the fact that both the 41st and the Parks and Rec wanted that restriction lifted, and there was no legal obligation to keep it. The LAFCO voted to remove the restriction. They do tell me they're going to keep that money in reserves and only spend it for emergencies. We'll see. For LAFCO is one of the most interesting committees that we have. There is going to be an upcoming review of the library, and I think that that is something that we should all be paying attention to closely. So, Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Short will report on that when that comes. I attended Addy Metum's grand reopening ribbon cutting. They have lower monthly rates at Addy Metum now. They have veterans' benefits that they will help you sign up for, and they do provide respite care that is very affordable. So, they're trying to reframe how Addy Metum has been viewed and make it more affordable for people in our community, given our economic status, the donor rates throughout the state. I was invited to attend a lunch and review. It's called Taco Cat, and it's an E3 program that was hosted by RIC Safe as well as KFUG. And these kids, about four or five of them, created all these messagings, the social media messaging with regard to overdoses, harm reduction, ways to administer Narcan. And it was really kind of a fun little thing. We got to review all their work and eat tacos, obviously, for lunch because they are the Taco Cat program. Wonderful presentation, and I invited them to come and share some of their work with the Board at some time. I attended the local behavioral health board meeting. We received a presentation from a new nonprofit called Trillium. Trillium is trying to be established so that they can set up a teen center, which we just heard that our teens in this community really want. The focus on this teen center is going to be for kids ages 10 to 14, and that's, it's an age group that we currently do not address. Coastal Connection has 14 to 24, but we are missing that gap. And if we look about starting to swim upstream, this is the start. We have first five, which is useful, up to five years old. From five to 10, we don't have much, but from 10 to 14 is a gap that we really need to look at filling. So, I'm excited to see if Trillium could maybe access some of the innovation funds that our local behavioral health board may be able to assist with. Attended the budget workshops with my colleagues. I think we're finding our groove. I think we're working to make sure that these workshops are valuable for not only ourselves but the public as well. Even though there wasn't very little public here, when I look on YouTube, I see that they have been viewed, you know, a couple hundred times. So, I'm hoping that this is something that is useful for the public. I find it very valuable, and I hope my colleagues do as well. I reviewed two possible cleanup locations. Once a year, I like to do a massive cleanup of an area. I've identified one over off Dayton Lane. The neighbors there are wanting to have a cleanup happened. It's just coordinating with the owner of that property, as well as an elderly woman off of Hodge Lane. And what I do is I try and coordinate with Rotary or the veterans or, you know, some group that will help get out there, spend a day, and get these properties cleaned up just to give a little assistance, especially to our elderly or veterans. I reviewed CSAC's policy committee meeting notes regarding the state's impacts for SNAP, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Program, Medicare, Medicare, all kind of due and related to the HR1 bill that was signed on July 4th. Once this starts being implemented, we need to be prepared for what those impacts are going to have to us locally, and so that's, I'm just trying to stay ahead of it. CSAC has been doing a great job having these workshops and these committee meetings, so it's been valuable to attend. Finally, the tsunami, obviously, took up, you know, a couple days worth of time in the last couple weeks. I think that our OES department did a wonderful job getting the information out. I believe that the problem, if we were to have to be able to debrief a little bit, was the Weather Service put out this kind of scary text with a loud, you know, warning, which then caused some panic, and people left their homes. And I think that when we're in blue skies, I think it's the time for us to really make sure that we are dialing people in so they know their zones, they know that if you are here on this street, you don't need to go to Hiuchi and wait. So, I think we'll get better, and I think we've had two good drills, and I think that we're going to continue to get better on how to get that information out. Finally, Caltrans is working to have coffee and conversations. They really want to make sure that they are working to include the community in what they're doing with Last Chance Grade, which is going to be an enormous undertaking to fund this. It's going to be $2 billion as of now. It could grow, go to be more. And in order for us to stay, keep this community engaged, they're having coffee and conversations. They want to hear from you. They want to know what your concerns are, so that that will then help them sell this on the federal level as well as the state level, so that we can really try and nail down this funding. That is going to be August 21st, from 10 to noon, at Seafront Bakery. So, put that on your calendars, and I hope to see you there.
Thanks Supervisor Sharkey. Supervisor Howard?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the great report, Supervisor. I'll try to make mine a little bit more brief. The, have had several meetings for the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, mostly around hiring a new director who, a conditional offer has been sent to Sean Roethlisau, who is currently with the City of Crescent City and would be coming over to us, I believe, on August 18th as the Director of the Border Coast Resource, or no, Border Coast Airport Authority. We'll see how he performs, but it will be for a statutory period and work forward from there with some conditionals. The, also attended a senior center meeting, also attended the Del Norte County Fair. It was a great fair this year. Spent three, three days at the fair. Also attended our Del Norte budget workshops. There was quite a bit of value in the budget workshops this year. I did start a little bit of conversation, which I appreciate County Council helping me out with. I will add to a bit of this conversation since I've had several conversations with folks that were concerned by some of my comments, specific to the harbor, Crescent, Crescent City Harbor District, and a tax that was brought forward as a citizens' initiative several years ago to help backfill a loan that they went out to use to repair the harbor. Part of the request came forward here and during discussion based on our transient occupancy tax, which at the time went from 8% to 10%, 2% going to the harbor. We know this is a tax that is essentially passed on to those visiting our area and utilizing our services and how those services are impacted. We're always looking for ways to backfill some of those impacts and increase our general funds, so that accounts for areas like law enforcement that gets used quite a bit when we have our traveling public here. So, that was something to consider, but the question was asked, and there does not appear to be a way, because of the citizens' initiative and the legal steps that it went through, to have the county pull back essentially that 2% tax if, if it were to consider it in the future, which I appreciate the Council's time to take a look at that. Also had Assemblyman Chris Rogers here. He's really hearing quite a bit throughout his district on state park lands. State park lands in his district, because of the lack of resources and funding for well over a decade, are pretty much mismatched in a lot of areas, and they impact private lands, adjacent private lands, to a great deal, especially as it relates to fire and noxious weeds. So, he's considering right now legislation for this coming year that would potentially allow a route for private landowners to help state park lands better manage for those impacts to those private lands. I'm looking forward to seeing how this could potentially work forward in some legislative language and how acceptable it would be to find some cosponsors to that legislation in the future. CSAC had its tribal working group meeting, also reflecting a little bit about the tsunami. It's good for us to react, but oftentimes, because there wasn't a significant effect, it allows some complacency to take place. We wouldn't want to see that happen. I appreciate the information that has come forward. I appreciate the efforts that OES here at Del Norte County went to, to inform our public. There was some overreaction in cases, but I'd rather have the overreaction than have a case where somebody was hurt. And then lastly, I'll end. Had a presentation from Site Logic on the current update on the microgrid feasibility study. They focused specifically on the northern microgrid, which would be the area around North Crest Drive from essentially the Highway 101 out to the Del Norte County Airport and Washington Boulevard area. It appears right now, based on the loads in that area, that we would need about a four-megawatt grid that would encompass anywhere from about 20 to 25 acres of land. That's a pretty substantial area, and there's not a lot of locations other than out at the airport to locate that size of a grid, but it is, it is doable, but it would take a heck of a lot of heavy lifting moving forward with, with that size of grid pattern without looking at the various options. We know we had, in this case, Pacific Power, four representatives from Pacific Power at the meeting, in addition to the Del Norte County School District and Center Coast Hospital that are all impacted by this area, and looking forward to the next steps in this feasibility process and how we can move together as a group to really shore up our areas of emergency services that are so critical, like we had in 2023 when all our electrical was completely down for eight to nine days. And that's the end of my report.
Thanks Supervisor Howard. Supervisor Wilson?
Thank you. Was largely gone for the past two weeks. I was on vacation. I appreciate everyone covering for me and taking and attending meetings. Came back, did attend the Border Coast Airport Authority meeting, and we had a robust discussion in and about, and it was, I was thankful that I could attend, backup Councilman Short, our Supervisor Short, for that meeting. And I have talked with and dealt with some of the solid waste management issues, but one of the bigger things was, came back and I found that one of our employees for the county who had, has been serving our county for 30 years for the Del Norte County Sheriff's Office, retired, Diana Stanley. She was the administrative assistant in her final roles there at Del Norte County Sheriff's Office, and I know we will probably and will be recognizing her later on. However, there are people that we work with every single day that make us better, and Diana was one of those. She gave more than 100%. She was, she brought her personal, personal self to the job every single day and made everybody's life better by doing so. She made me a better sheriff during my period of time as my administrative assistant. She made me appear far more smarter than, more intelligent than I was by reviewing all of my documentary, documents going out of my office and brought wisdom, knowledge, and expertise to the job because she had historical knowledge of that position. When I came in as sheriff, I was very blessed in the fact that the positions below me, immediately below me, were filled by people that had over 20 years of service to Del Norte County and then knew the job inside out. Those people can never be replaced. I know for Diana, she had institutional knowledge of that organization. She was the only one in that organization that had direct knowledge of how the computer system worked internally, how to get information out of that system that wasn't just a one-button report pushed out. And so, that kind of understanding is difficult to replace when it's lost. And I just personally want to thank her for her service and dedication to our county because, again, she is one of those individuals that, that by far made, made the job better, and inside that organization, she made every employee feel like part of the family. And for that, I can thank, I cannot thank her enough. And there are so many employees in this organization that have done that and do that every day, and, and we should always recognize them. Thank you so much.
Thanks Supervisor Wilsons. Supervisor Short?
Thank you. Just a couple of short things. For those traveling on Cooper Avenue this afternoon, we, the Fire Department, will be burning down a building on the corner of Del Norte and Cooper. This is a kind of cooperative effort between the code enforcement folks here. Ryan and his crew have done a great job getting this derelict parcel under control. We've had multiple calls there, multiple complaints from the neighborhood with nefarious, various nefarious activities going on there. So, glad to finally get this lot cleaned up and make that neighborhood a better place. But there will be a traffic disruption on Cooper Avenue for those that are traveling there this afternoon, and everything else has been touched on by my colleagues. So, I will end my report.
Thanks Supervisor Short. With that, we'll take up the consent agenda. We'll take public comment on consent agenda items only. Do we have any public comment?
Sam Straight, County. I see while I've been gone, you've managed to economize the Board of Supervisors meeting down to just short of 38 minutes. Must congratulate you that you now have eight items on the, on the regular business schedule, 10 items on the consent agenda. Three of the items that are not on the consent agenda are reports. You've got three budget transfers. You've got the public comment, and all the rest of the business is on the consent agenda. Congratulations.
Okay, seeing no other public comment, bring back to the Board.
Make a motion to approve the consent issue?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Tony, would you poll vote?
Supervisor Sharkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Borges? Oh, see, I just, I'm sorry. It's been a few years. Give me a minute here. Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
I apologize. Thank you all.
Did we get everybody?
We did.
Okay.
Some twice.
You're doing good, Tony. All right, that brings us to our 10:25 timed item is our public comment period. Members of the public may address the Board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the Board. If you're addressing the Board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the Board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Do you have any general public comment?
So, Chris, am I understanding that, because I was beginning to work on a repeal of the TOT tax, only to have it reallocated back to the county? Can I do that? Never mind. Okay, June 25th of this year, Harbor Master Rattamaker and Sandy Moreno convinced the Harbor Commission not to pay $181,000 insurance premium. That would have covered our docks and electrical pedestals, but my understanding is that probably wouldn't have covered tsunamis. I don't know. Instead, they chose to keep the money in what they call their life account, an account that they use like a regular checking account. I don't know how they do it, but they do. 35 days later, a tsunami came through. It caused some damage to H Dock, but let's be clear, it's not $1 million. After I read a misleading article, oh, after, oh yeah, I read a misleading article in the SF Gate newspaper, I responded to that article, and Mr. Dave Harder, the original designer and builder of H Dock, reached out to me from the Bay Area. I hosted him for two days so he could inspect the dock. While here, I overheard him telling one of his crew members, they could straighten the dock by the end of September for around $50,000. That does not include the long neglected electrical wiring, the fire suppression system, or the dredging. Despite this, Mr. Rattamaker insulated the damage to $1 million without any inspection whatsoever, even tried to get Ron Sloop from Moffett and Nichols to state that figure, but Mr. Sloop refused. Let's also remember, the harbor has not maintained those docks for years. Now, to get state aid, they will likely have to falsify maintenance records for Cal OES. And while all this is happening, the harbor is operating with a $6 million deficit, working deficit, as reported by the grand jury. Inflating damage claims and declaring emergencies when the numbers don't match reality is not just a harbor problem, it's a county problem. It impacts our credibility and our financial stability and our standing with state and federal agencies. Although I believe the harbor does need to get aid, I think there should be oversight from the outside, not from the harbor of how it's spent. So, that's my thought. Thank you.
As most of you know, I've been out of town for the past couple of months, and I want to report that when I was in the Sydney Airport and told them that I was 75 years and older, that they still made me take my shoes off, run way through a metal detector, and get patted down. So, I got to thinking afterwards, when I buy my ticket, I pay for that service, and I thought that was rather warranted. They did their job. When I came into this board meeting today, I want to remind you, I do pay my property taxes. I didn't have to take my shoes off. I didn't have to go through a detector, and I didn't get patted down. So, I thought that from a security standpoint, I'm getting kind of shorted. It's been a year and a half since we brought to the attention of the Board that the sheriff is rather overwhelmed with regards to the cost of his, or the, the ability to have deputies on his staff and that there is a distinct lack of understanding from this Board that, that you don't pay deputies well enough. And from that standpoint, I feel that my security- feel that my security in this county is compromised, even though I do pay my taxes. And I wonder I'm wondering when you are going to address that issue, that shortfall, and perhaps acknowledge the fact that the sheriff needs constant help with regards to his ability to function in this county. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Supervisors, ma'am and sirs. My name is Dr. Dave Grayson. I am a retired dentist, and I've been living here in the Birch Ocean View area for the past six years. And I want to bring something to your attention, which I believe poses a real public safety and quality of issue here in Delmar County, specifically in Birch Ocean View. Okay. Did you know that they are now hunting elk with bows right in the center of Birch Ocean View? And obviously, if you're familiar with that area, you know that this is surrounded by busy thoroughfares, children's school bus stops, houses, businesses, all kinds of things. Now, I found out about this the hard way. Last year, when I was just enjoying my day off on Saturday, watching my college football, my wife comes in and tells me, hey, there's a guy with a rifle walking across our yard. So I jump up and I go look, and I can tell that it's a game warden, and he's he's walking across with his high powered hunting rifle. And I look over and I see there's an elk, full big elk with, you know, the antlers and everything. He seems to be in some kind of distress. He's caught up in a some foliage or something like that. Anyway, the the game warden shoots the elk. And I don't know if you know what a 30 ought six sounds like right outside your window. It's pretty loud. And then for the next four hours after this, I had to listen to the hunter who botched the kill butcher this animal with what sounded like an electric chainsaw. Anyway, after we watched the warden kill the elk, I called him over and I said, hey, what's going on here? What happened? And he said, oh, the elk was wounded. By the way, can you hear me? Okay, okay. And he said, well, it was wounded. And I said, what, an auto accident or something like that? And he said, no, it was wounded in a bow hunt next door. And I went, wait a minute, whose idea was this to be hunting bow elk with a bow on this tiny plot of land, once again, surrounded by all of this basically a subdivision, as I'm sure you all know about, you know, the Birch Ocean View area. And the issue is that if an animal is wounded, this hunter cannot chase this wounded animal off onto the other properties that that, you know, like it ran off onto into mine and my neighbor's property. I talked to the warden about this, and he admitted this this was a public nuisance, public nuisance, which is a misdemeanor. And it's a, you know, there's there's penalties for this. And not to mention that this animal suffered for almost two and a half hours before the game warden came over and put the elk down. Now, we had learned that this is part of the share hunt program, which is part of the Department of Fish and Wildlife. Now, fish and wildlife can authorize hunts, but they cannot authorize grievously wounded thousand pound animals with a head full of bayonets running around through our neighborhood. They can't authorize that. Okay, now, I asked the property owners next door, would they be would they after seeing this happening, would they be interested in discontinuing this hunt? And they said, no, we're going to let them continue to hunt. I asked Department of Fish and Wildlife, ran it all the way up to the head of the Department of Fish and Wildlife and said, no, we're going to continue with it. So I want to make it clear, I'm not making a statement about hunting in general. I am only opposed to hunting elk with a bow in this little tiny piece of parcel right in the middle of Birch Ocean View. Hunting season starts Friday for the elk. And I would ask this body here if there's anything you guys could help with. Perhaps the board could petition the Department of Fish and Wildlife to rescind this hunting authorization. And I would add that the elk are the most kind and gentle of all creatures. And there is no downside for stopping this hunting there. And thank you. Thank you much.
Thank you.
I've never done this before. So is would you guys want to I made a copy of my little statement.
You can hand it to Tony, and she'll go through and hand it to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And that'll bring us to our 10:30 timed item. Receive a presentation from the CSAC Grants Initiative and Consider the Authorization of a Contract for Grant-Related Services as Recommended by the Grants Technical Advisory Committee. Welcome. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Sorry, I was on mute. Good morning, members of the board. And let me start by thanking you for the opportunity this morning to present on the CSAC Grants Initiative. My name is Veronica Smith, and I'm the Director of Programs and Grants for the CSAC Foundation. And I'm joined by Kristy Moore, our partner from the Ferguson Group, who you will also be hearing from today as well. So our goal today is to just provide a brief overview of the CSAC Grants Initiative, why this is a strategic moment for Delmar County, and what we're proposing to deliver. And we do have a presentation. And so I'm wondering if you all are able to view the presentation at this at this time?
I think.
We still see you.
Oh, okay. We, I think, can you share? We thought that it was going to be shared by the clerk, but if we need to load that, we can do that as well. And.
Looks like they have it, Veronica.
Oh, great. Thank you so much for that. So a little bit about the CSAC Grants Initiative. If we could just advance the slide, please.
Well, we're not quite seeing it yet. Just give us one second. There we go.
Great. A little bit about the CSAC Grants Initiative. We launched the initiative back in 2022 as a strategic partnership with the Ferguson Group. And the initiative was really designed in direct response to county leaders' feedback that more proactive and strategic support was needed to access competitive competitive federal and state grant funding, particularly in smaller rural counties. So fast forward, the initiative has been in place. And what we do is provide comprehensive results driven driven grant services. And what I'd like to point out is that the initiative wasn't put in place to simply just write grants. But what we do is provide more comprehensive strategic development grant services that you'll hear briefly about in a few more slides ahead. So could you advance the slide one more time, please? The team, our core team consists of Paul Dancheck, who's the COO of the California Counties Foundation, myself, and three core members of the Ferguson Group. And how we operate our initiative is depending on the types of programs or grants that we are seeking on behalf of counties. We bring in additional team members from the the grants side of the house of the Ferguson Group. So while you see just the five of us on this slide here before you, there is a very robust team of grant strategists and specialists who are brought in to assist with projects on an as needed basis. Could you advance the slide, please? So a little bit about the CGI team. We have a very deep experience with a combined 42 years of experience in federal, state, and foundation grant space. And we are seasoned seasoned grant strategists who have experience not only in the consulting world, but also in working in the public sector space at both the county level, the city level, as well as the state level. Additionally, there's a proven track record, both within CSAC as well as our partners at the Ferguson Group, as it relates to managing grants and securing grants on behalf of our clients. And with that, if we could advance to the next slide, and I will turn it over to Kristy Moore with the Ferguson Group to go into some of the services that we are proposing for Delmar Delmar County.
Thank you, Veronica. And as Veronica said, I'm Kristy Moore of the Ferguson Group. We are the partner with CSAC on the CSAC Grants Initiative. We do have a deep team of experts that would be supporting the county in this initiative. You saw on the slide on the screen that Heidi Schott and Kristen Long are two of our leads. Kristen will actually be the client manager and be overseeing all the activities for the county. If you choose to go forward with this initiative, and she would be supported by our grant experts based on what the county's priorities and programs are. A little bit of what to follow up on what Veronica is saying is why now? Federal funding is definitely robust and out there. But it's a little uncertain right now. There's definitely a pause in some changes occurring, which is very typical in the start of a new administration. We're seeing some of that also go down into state grants and affect the way that state grants are being put out in an opposite way. We're actually seeing state grants come out in a much more fluid and much more rapid pace than for the federal. And under this initiative, we actually look at federal funding, state funding, foundation funding, and even regional and local funding as well. So we look at all the different opportunities from grants that we can look at. The biggest priority, though, and the biggest need is to really be proactive. We have found that when we work with communities to be proactive and actually starting to align your projects with the programs as as opposed to the other way around, where you're reacting to a notice of funding availability that comes out and trying to fit your projects into that. We find that folks are much more successful, and the process is much more efficient and easier on staff when we are proactive in that nature, and a lot of times increasing return on investment, as well as success rates by two or threefold than the national average. Next slide. This is a little bit of a review of our current CGI clients. We are currently working with Inyo, Mono, Sacramento, Nevada, and Sonoma Counties. We have previously worked with Humboldt, Imperial, San Luis, and Ventura, and have ongoing relationships with some of those past CGI clients and as well. Statewide, we have actually offered services and provided services through through all of or to all of California counties through webinars, workshops, and personalized consultations. For Delmar County, though, we've actually created a custom package to extend our services to be much more personalized to your needs and really help to refine and and develop that much broader strategic vision, working with you as elected officials as well as your staff. So next slide, you're gonna probably actually go to the next second or one more. So now I'm going to get into how this is going to work. As a review, just to make sure that everybody is kind of on the same page and has an understanding of the entire grant cycle, there's essentially five different parts. The first one is identifying the needs and being much and developing that strategic approach. This is what we do consistently. We do it ongoing through the entire relationship and the entire partnership with a heavy emphasis in the first quarter of the partnership with you, where we're really downloading all of your projects, putting them in that plan and starting to to match those projects with your programs, which gets into the second step, which is figuring out where we're going to fund these. So this is where we do the research and do the analysis to start to identify and match your project priorities with programs, and then start to get those projects ready to accept those funds and to be the most competitive in the application process itself. Again, that's ongoing because we're constantly putting new projects into the plan and into the strategy and constantly looking at new programs, giving you an advanced notice and an advanced alert when those programs are going to open. And then that starts to get into the calendaring, where we're able to identify and predict as much as possible when a grant is going to come out so that we can start to get all the partnerships in play, all the background materials or any needed information for the application before we go into step three, which is the grant application period itself. This is triggered by when the notice of funding availability opens up and when it closes. So this is the grant writing phase. Ironically, this is probably the smallest step in the entire process, meaning that this 30 to 60 day or 30 to 90 day notice is where we're doing the least amount of work. And that doesn't take away from grant writing. I'm just saying that the majority of what we're doing is is actually to prepare your projects so that they are the most competitive, prepare your staff so that we can help write that grant for them in this phase, and and have that be the easiest thing possible for you and and produce a competitive application. Once the applications go in, we get into the fourth stage. I often call this the waiting game. That's where you're waiting to see if the application was successful. We're finding actually now in a more modern take on the grant cycle, that we're seeing a lot of questions come back from the funding agencies in this period. So we support you through that. So they might have questions on different elements of your application, how you're going to manage the funds, so on and so forth. And so we participate and help advise in that period. That can take anywhere up to six months to get that final review and that final notice back from the from the funding agency that your funds are awarded. A common thing that we do here as well is start to understand the post award applications of the grants. So start to get your staff ready and your processes ready to go into the reporting and compliance stage, which is the final stage. This is the implementation. This is the awards are funded. They're in the they've been provided to the county. And then we're doing everything there to help make sure that you're efficiently and effectively and under and are compliant in the process for the grant award stage or the post management side, which gets us right back to number one, where we're starting to build on that and start to identify those projects and go to the next project. Next slide. So these are the services proposed into your package. This is everything that's included that we pulled in and talking to your staff and talking to the to the committee and what you would need. The two big highlighted areas are the ones that we wanted to focus on today. That's the development of the strategic funding plan. And then custom for Delmar is actually the inclusion of grant writing. So it's all comprehensive. So we'll actually start to do the grant writing for you, start to finish. That's where we work with your staff. They give us all the information we would need to write the grant. And then we write the narratives, we do the budgets, we do all the forms to take that off of your your staff and and put it on ours. And we pull in our expert grant writers to do that. The other things there included is monthly coordination, you get a dedicated team, weekly updates, advanced notices, and customized research. The funding blueprints, for example, are ones where we have if you have a larger project or a more complicated project, we actually start to do a blueprint for that from a funding perspective. These are the things you would need to do, the partnerships you would need to engage in prior to submitting an application, or maybe even multiple applications underneath under multiple programs. So that's a unique service that we provide to again on that strategic front. Next slide. So a lot of folks say, why do we need to do a strategic funding plan? Again, where we have found that working with communities to be strategic in the way that they're addressing their funding needs returns a significant amount of dollars down to the county for those projects. It also simplifies it, makes it more efficient, and and starts to open the doors to new concepts and new availability funding that you might not otherwise think of. We're constantly building. So the strategic funding plan is something that starts out as a base, but as we get to know you and you are to start to work with your staff and the different departments, it grows. So we add different components. We add a tracker, we add a calendar. We have the post award side as well. So everything kind of goes into there. And it really becomes your hub for how you're going to address on the pre award side and the application side to stay coordinated and and reporting back where you plan to use the funds and which projects you want to want to target. Next slide. So this is a little peek of what it looks like. This is just one little page of it. You can see you've got it might be hard for to see up there in terms of the reading the fine print. But essentially, on the left hand side is a is a review of all the projects, a small description, how much funding is needed. Those little blue columns in the middle is where we customize your plan based on your needs. So if you have strategic goals or types of projects that you want to focus on, we start to break up the projects like that. The green and the yellow is where the fun happens. This is where we work with you to identify your top priorities. That's the green focus. And then the yellow focus is where we put our brains on it. And we say, this is a fundable project. This has got a really good chance and a high probability of funding. And we start to align that. And that's where the strategy really starts to build into play. So that's a little bit of a peek. I think this is our last kind of wrap up slide here. That's a little peek on on what your custom package is through CGI and what it might look like and how we. look like and how we plan to help the county really start to be strategic about the way that you're looking at grant funding and start to bring those dollars home.
Great. Thank you so much. I'll open it up to the board for questions or comments. If you have anybody that wants to lead out. Everybody's starting?
Thank you. I sit on the technical advisory committee with Supervisor Borges with regard to grants. So this is something that was brought forward to us and we opted to want to bring this forward to the whole board. What I personally liked about this, participating in this is their setup, right? Oftentimes what we do is we say, oh, there's a grant out there and it's going to do X. And then we come up with how we're gonna, how we could fit into X. This is more of a strategy, strategically approaching it, saying, meeting with the departments and saying, what projects do you have? How can we help you develop them? What's our strategy? And then waiting for that perfect grant to come down. So we're, we're going to be in a better position to receive those grants. I just want to also say that we previously had budgeted for a whole grant position here in Del Norte County and that would be more than what the cost of this program would be. So we pivoted from that. Either we were unable to find the position or fill the position or it just, people didn't match up with what our needs were. So this cost is $75,000 for this kind of tailored plan that they're, they're offering us, which is less than what a grant position would be, so.
The only thing I can, I can add is, is this fits well with our overall strategic plan of where we want to see ourselves going forward. Opportunities like this are, we get emails constantly showing potential grants that are available, whether it's for parks or whether it's for fuel reduction or whether, and oftentimes we are faced with the question of, yes, this is something we could use, but we do not have a person or the expertise in line to pursue that grant through its entirety. And so many opportunities are lost to Del Norte County merely by the fact that we do not have someone dedicated to writing grants and going and pushing forward and making sure that they have the best opportunity to pursue these grants that are available to Del Norte County. And so we do miss out on a lot of opportunities because no particular office has that expertise. Planning is probably the best at, at pursuing grants that fulfill the goals and objectives of the planning department. However, most departments don't have that luxury. DHSS does a great job. Other departments that have personnel that, that pursue those kinds of things, but many of our departments are too small, do not have that opportunity and don't have the expertise in-house to pursue it. So this would be a great way of obtaining that kind of focus, pursuit of grants. Again, one of the other issues that always come with grants is matchings, which has always been a real problem for Del Norte County because we don't often have, when we're pursuing grants, like the sheriff's office, whether at one time we were pursuing a $20 million grant. Well, when you're looking at a 5% match on a $20 million grant, it's a lot of money. And unfortunately, Del Norte County doesn't have access to that. So we have to look towards other methodologies and many grants allow you to have match. So you can match with services, but you have to come up with that dollar amount to offset the 5 or 10% requirement and, and that sometimes is very prohibitive for Del Norte County.
No, I appreciate both Supervisor Starky and Supervisor Wilson's comments. I remember back when President Ed Valenzuela was really leading the charge on this for the California State Association of Counties. And it really came down as a rural driver for us. So many counties like Del Norte just did not have the capacity in-house to provide and pursue opportunities at both the state and federal level. And so the foundation, having accepted this, this piece and moved forward with contracting with the Ferguson Group has really teed up the ability for rurals to pursue and have a competitive edge when it comes to chasing these grants. And, you know, I could think of where this process a decade ago would have been really helpful at the time, given us that competitive edge around the pursuit of the jail where we had been passed over essentially three times and still don't have any money from the state to do our jail improvements. But three times we submitted that grant opportunity, three times got denied. Having this competitive edge, more importantly, a group that knows what they're doing will really allow us to move forward with these, as Supervisor Wilson highlighted, our strategic plan and those alignment pieces that we absolutely need to take that next step forward in a proactive fashion. So fully supportive of this effort.
Yeah, well said from Supervisor Wilson and Supervisor Howard. I don't need to belabor this, it seems like a no-brainer to me.
Okay. With that, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Any public comment on this?
I just have a couple of questions. That's $75,000 one time or $75,000 a year?
It'll be for one year and then we'll reevaluate what the needs are.
Okay, got it. And then are you going to eliminate the grant writing position for the county?
I believe we already have. So yes, the answer is yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So are you guys going to learn how to do grants in this process too? Okay. Did you know about deepseek.com? Deepseek, S-E-E-K dot com. It's a new program out and it's for grants. I'm, I'm delving into it myself, so. Yeah. There's something to think about.
Hi, I'm Gail Tarbell. I've been a grant writer, so I just have some questions. Because she presents a really good sales pitch, but how often will they be available to you? I mean, you need a full-time grant writer when you think of all the departments you have, you know, and so many needs in the county. So I would really see what, what, what kind of staffing is going to be available for you at full-time to work with the staff. And so many grants, you know, because I was a grant writer, there's a lot of criteria to meet. And presenting what the needs are, it's so important to have the data supporting the needs and are they going to use a template they've used from another county? And will there be misinformation in there? Because I've had studies done for the tribe and, you know, sometimes they'll have the wrong information because, oh, sorry, we forgot to take that out. That was for another tribe's project. So those kind of things can be missed if you have a, someone doing a lot of grants and things to think about. And also is it 75 a year and then is there so much for each grant on top of that?
Can I?
Or is it just flat fee 75,000 a year?
If you want to, or we can answer at the end.
Okay. So just things to think about and it really is good to have a strategy, like where are we going? What's our roadmap? What do we need first? Things like that. But, you know, I know it's hard to find a good grant writer. And I know that Humboldt Foundation has a list of grant writers that you can hire too. But anyway, just my thoughts.
Okay. So if I could just answer that, a lot of your questions are answered within the contract that they presented to us, so those are in there. We've really fleshed this out and we've, Supervisor Borges and I, as well as our admin staff, are feeling really comfortable with the services that they're able to provide. That doesn't mean that we're not going to go back at some point and say, we need this. But that's, we have a grant TAC committee and we meet quarterly. And so we are going to be staying on top of the grants. We're going to be staying on top of the work that this service is going to provide and we'll be able to report that back to the full board.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the board or ladies online, if you have anything you would like to add or questions you'd like to answer, if anything you've heard. We're good? Okay. Okay. So then I will bring it back to the board.
I'd make a motion to authorize a contract for grant-led services from the foundation, CSAC Grants Foundation.
I will second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Tony, would you please?
Try.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes. It moves towards trying to meet our strategic plan and it fits well within what we were trying to do overall.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes. Okay. Thank you guys so much for the presentation.
Thank you. We're very excited to get started.
Okay, that takes us to our 10:40 timed item. Phase one EMS system assessment update, the EOA Steering Committee members. Come on up.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Larry Karst, Director of North Coast EMS and I'm here to introduce Endpoint EMS Consulting. I hope they're going to be connected by Zoom soon. And John Eaglesham and Nancy Lapala. And we've reported before, this is an update of the ambulance exclusive operating area process. And I think they're with us. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning. All right. Go ahead and have at it.
All right. John is going to post the EMS presentation.
Is everybody able to see the presentation?
No, I'm not, John.
Not yet.
Oh. We're going to load that in just a moment.
While John is loading that, I'll just kind of just say good morning to you, Board Chair and Supervisors. Endpoint is pleased to be here. I'm Nancy Lapala and my business partner, John Eaglesham. We started this project in January through a competitive RFP process for consulting services with North Coast EMS. This project involves three different phases. This is the first phase, which is the EMS system assessment. And then the additional phases will be to develop an evidence RFP along and support North Coast EMS in the procurement process and then develop an ambulance contract with the highest scoring proposer. Our presentation today will highlight the process Endpoint used to conduct the EMS assessment and identify key findings and our recommendations.
We're all able to see this, correct?
No, John, we're not. I wonder if the clerk of the board could?
I'll stop and reshare.
Okay, maybe you need to stop and reshare. So again, I'll just keep going until we can get the PowerPoint up and running because I know you really want to see the details.
Yeah, but please tell me if you can see it. I keep resharing it.
Okay, now we see it, John. There we go.
Now we're getting it.
Okay, we're still on this slide. So we really appreciate the active participation of the systems stakeholders in sharing their thoughts and ideas on how to improve the system. It's really important that we identify what's currently working in the system and where there are future opportunities for improvements. It was our job to take a look at the entire system and how it all works together. Next slide, John. As part of the assessment requirements, we were required to involve stakeholder input, to focus on some specific key areas and to conduct data analysis with various data systems to support our findings and recommendations. Next slide. Stakeholder input is always important and it's, in order for us to achieve widespread stakeholder input, Endpoint began the process with a strategic SOAR exercise at the very first kickoff meeting. We communicated with over 21 organizations. We conducted listening sessions, site visits for observation, sent out an online survey to over 94 individuals, achieving a 64% response rate. As a result of that, stakeholders identified the system strengths were really collaboration and a strong community focus. They appreciated the paramedic-level ambulance transport system, volunteer fire services, and an emergency department that was really active in participating in the EMS system. Stakeholders identified some areas for improvement as well, and that included radio communication between responders, dispatch services, ambulance availability and coverage, long transports out of county, taking an ambulance out of the system, lack of accountability and transparency of the ambulance contractor's performance, high turnover rate of EMS personnel on the ambulance, lack of understanding of coordination between, lack of understanding of coordination between the ambulance provider and fire response. And that also identified that there's a need to better understand the operational capabilities and limitations of each of the organizations. We also looked at data and document review. We reviewed many reports and available data from multiple data sources, including clinical data, state EMS authorities' core measures, Sutter Coast Hospital data, Bay Cities ambulance computer aided dispatch data, EMS plans, contracts, Del Norte ambulance and report and CQI reports, and financial payer mix. We reviewed the map of the county and overlaid 2020 census, population census data and looked at call, EMS calls on top of the map. And John's going to go into a little bit more detail on what that shows us. John?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Nancy. I'd like to provide an overview of the call volume and the county map analysis that Endpoint conducted to assess emergency calls throughout the county. The map to the right demonstrates emergency medical requests for two calendar years, 2023 and 2024. The yellow circles are created when one or more calls occur in the same area. The larger the circles represents, the higher the call volume in that area. Endpoint collaborated with a GIS company called Waypoint Geospedal. They did an overlay of the calls on the county map. Waypoint utilized the U.S. National Grid system in conjunction with the most recent U.S. Census population data that Nancy mentioned to plot out the location of the calls. Utilizing the same two-year period, Endpoint was able to draw irregular pentagons around the individual population centers that had the most calls. For this presentation, we're referring to them as community groups. And you can see at the map on the very top in the light blue is Smith River. And then we could group them, group them, group them by population and call volume all the way down to Klamath, which is very rural but had sporadic calls throughout this whole purple area. The chart now takes those 911 medical calls, which are notated in the red bar, and the code two calls, which are non-licensed sirens, which are in the blue bar. And it put them by the community groups. So we could get an idea, where is the activity? Where's the call volume throughout the county? There's not a lot of call volume, which is why we had to use two years. And it's typical that the greater population centers have the most 911 calls. The challenge for us is the distance between the community groups, making ambulance deployment to each one very difficult. So once we had that, then we took a look at response times. So what the data found, or the data that was provided, what we were able to find out was that the emergency medical calls were responded to in 10 minutes or less in the more populated community groups in the county. Illustrated in the green colors in the graph shows less than, less than 10 minutes from time of dispatch to on scene. And it cascades down to where we have less call volume. As you get out to the less populated areas, the yellow on the graph then turns to 10, 15 minutes to 30 minutes. And then in the Klamath area, you see less than 45 minutes a majority of the time. So we were able to look at activity, call volume, population, and where the system could benefit from enhancements. We also took a look at Sutter Coast Hospital emergency department data. They've been very cooperative. This is four years worth of data. And in 2024, Sutter Coast recorded over 20,000 emergency department visits into their ED with over 3,600 patients transported in by ambulance. Sutter stabilizes critical patients and on occasion will transfer them to a higher level hospital based on the needs of the patient. Last year, Sutter transferred 116 patients out by critical care ground ambulances and 411 by, by air ambulance services. So that gives us a snapshot. Now I'd turn it back to Nancy who will outline some of Key Point's findings and recommendations.
Thank you, John. So just some key findings. Thank you, John. So just some key findings. Del Norte Ambulance is meeting the minimum requirements of their current contract with the county based on the data available to review. Sutter Coast Hospital is an active participant, providing good clinical oversight of local paramedics. The Sheriff's Department staff work very hard with the limited resources, but at this time, they are unable to provide emergency medical dispatch and pre-arrival instructions to 911 medical callers, or provide any medical data on medical call reports. 911 medical call reports. There's a lack of transparency in system oversight and a lack of trust. There needs to be, to strengthen collaborative working relationships, and there needs to be dynamic ambulance deployment, especially in the more remote rural areas. Next slide. Here are our key recommendations. Some of these recommendations, you'll see policy, leadership, and RFP. Some of these can be achieved through policy and leadership. Some will need to be addressed in the ambulance RFP going forward. It was evident to everyone we heard from that they want to improve the EMS system for Del Norte County, and this is the perfect opportunity to make those improvements now. These recommendations focus on improving the patient's experience, creating equitable ambulance response, improving transparency of the EMS system and ambulance contractors' performance, and working to ensure the right resource is sent to the right call with the most appropriate time to meet their emergency medical needs. The next phase of our, of our project is to work with North Coast EMS and the county leadership and EMS system stakeholders in incorporating these recommendations into the next ambulance RFP. Next slide, John. At this time, we're happy to answer any questions from the board. Also, it's important to note that North Coast EMS has posted the report on their website along with a comment sheet, and we welcome stakeholders to provide written comment. Those comments will be reviewed and incorporated as an addendum to the report. So at this time, we want to thank you and just let you know how much we appreciate your time this morning and all the stakeholders for the time they took to help us better understand Del Norte County's emergency medical services.
Great. Thank you, Nancy and John. I'm gonna open it up for public comment. I'll take that first, if there's any public comment on this presentation.
I guess I'll lead off. Seems like it's been about a year and a half ago where it was announced in this very chambers that an ad hoc committee had been formed to determine whether or not Del Norte Ambulance would receive an exclusive area. Is something I'm doing? Okay. At that point, we were told that the five fire chiefs in the county felt that Del Norte Ambulance, their service was inadequate, and this basically kicked off this whole process of seeking an RFP. Since that time, the reason for an RFP has evolved from the fact that there's no supporting evidence to support the fire chief's claim that Del Norte Ambulance provides inadequate service, and it would seem like the adequate, the ad hoc committee would have spent the time to arrive at that same conclusion, because it seems like Endpoint has come to that same conclusion that Del Norte Ambulance provides adequate service and in fact lives up to its current contract. You have three years to change the contract before the current contract with Del Norte Ambulance expires. And instead, you elected to go through an RFP process, which will cost the taxpayers a significant amount of money from what appears to be an erroneous assumption by the ad hoc committee that was when their report was presented to this Board of Supervisors. So I'm thoroughly annoyed that we're at this stage where we're still pursuing an RFP when we have a perfectly adequate ambulance service in this county whose contract can be altered to reflect any necessary changes to the contract in order to improve service in Del Norte County. And there should be some consequences to the fact that the ad hoc committee failed miserably in their estimation of Del Norte Ambulance's service to this community for over 40 years. I hope you'll keep that in mind when you elect to pursue this RFP.
Good morning. Charles Tweed from Del Norte Ambulance, here to share a letter from Ron Sandler. He'd like to say that we appreciate the comprehensive EMS system assessment prepared by Endpoint EMS Consulting in the area they identified for improvement. For years, Del Norte Ambulance and Sutter Coast Hospital have worked together to deliver the highest possible level of care to our community, and I look forward to others joining the mission. It is not too late to do the right thing. We urge you to reconsider the grandfathering of the EOA ambulance service so we can begin making vital improvements now, not two or three years from now. True leadership means rethinking a stance when presented with new information and acting in the best interest of your constituents. So that was from Ron Sandler, and so he also liked to share a full disclosure that he is a member of the Sutter Coast Hospital Board of Directors, and these views do not represent the hospital. Thank you.
Seeing other public comment. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board for any questions or comments.
I have a question for Endpoint. The data that you shared with the screen, with the dots and all the, where the calls come from, that's all from the waypoint that you received that information from Del Norte Ambulance? That wasn't cross-referenced with information from the Sheriff's Department, from their call system? Because you just didn't have that information available. If you were to get that information, do you anticipate that would change any of these statistics that you, you know, did a big overview today? The report is much more detailed. But do you think any of that information would change if you were to get that information from the CAD system at the Sheriff's Department?
Do you want to answer that, John?
Yeah. Well, thank you for that question. We can only analyze the data that's available, and we did spend some time in the Sheriff's Dispatch Center and watch their, their work, and they're very effective and very efficient, understaffed, but they were very efficient, and we did ask for data. We wanted to look at the amount of time from the time they get the 911 call to the ambulance gets on scene, and, and when they take the call and give it then to the ambulance company's contractor, Bay City's ambulance. That would be a measure what we'd like to look at. We don't think it's long, but we would want to look at it. But the sheriff was unable to write that report. He said, well, the sheriff's staff said they don't currently write those reports, and so they weren't able to provide it for us. Would it change things? I don't think it would change things a lot.
Great. Thank you very much.
One of the, one of the issues that makes problematic location is the fact that if you call on a 911 and you are on the 101 corridor, it will go to CHP automatically. And then that data would only locate, geolocate unless you have your location on your phone. It only locates the tower. It does not locate, because they cannot triangulate in most of our very remote areas. And so it'll give you a general area, but it will not give you specifics. And so some of the data is not going to be there, because it just doesn't exist. The other thing is, is looking at the Endpoint report, I agreed with all of their findings at the very end of the, of the report, identifying metrics that we could put into, into our analytics that would be reflective and get, and draw back that information from North Coast EMS as far as time of call, time of arrival, time of clearance. The metrics that they have that are missing, whether it's medical performance data from, from certain fire agencies, that again is something that, that I think needs to be worked on so that there is a record of what services, what medical services are being provided at scene by fire services before or even by law enforcement services, because I know CHP oftentimes they have the paramedic training, and they provide some services on accidents that are in remote areas prior to arrival of EMS or ambulance to the scene. And so a lot of that data needs to be fleshed out and can be fleshed out. The dispatch issue is a much harder solve for us. It's a much harder lift for us. I've always advocated that, that Del Norte County has, should have its own central emergency EMS system, not connected to the Sheriff's Office. But right now, most of the, a lot of the service recipients pay nothing into that system to support it. And so that needs to somehow be looked at and changed in our future so that there is adequate dollars coming in for providing county EMS services at a much more robust level than is currently available. Because a lot of the issues that are inherent in the dispatch system at the Sheriff's Office are, are service and plant issues that make that job extremely difficult. Where most call centers in existence today, they have call takers and call givers, and they are separate jobs altogether. So that allows the work to be spread out in a more economic, in more doable fashion, and puts much less stress on the operators in, in act. Our Sheriff's Office, unfortunately, most of the time, you have one dispatcher in there. They're taking the call, getting the call, giving the call, answering the radio. They're running data checks on, on licenses and information. They're communicating with all agencies, and most of the time, they've got some deputy behind them asking what's going on. So I mean, the amount of multitasking required to do that job is exceptionally difficult and unique, and the individuals that can actually do that job are, are gifted, are tremendously gifted. And, and that makes it a hard job to fulfill. And when you don't have the seven, six, seven bodies necessary to 24/7, 365, that thing, what you end up doing is the three or four individuals that are in there working, are working 24, not even, they're working 24/7, but they're working 12-hour shifts, and they're working seven days a week, or six days a week, five days a week, and that burns them out very quickly. And it, it needs to be addressed. It's something that is problematic. It's, it's identified well in this report, and I thank you for that. But it is something that we as a county need to, need to address. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate Supervisor Wilson bringing this up, because that was one of the more interesting pieces of the work that Endpoint has pulled together. And it really, dispatch, as you've stated, Supervisor Wilson, is one of the most grueling, difficult jobs we have here in the county, and it's one of the most turned-over positions that we have here in the county in the Sheriff's Department. And it definitely, in the cases around really why a lot of these issues have come up, I, I think Endpoint has really put their finger on some low-hanging fruit that we as a board really need to work to address. And I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of ways to go about doing that. One of the things I did not realize is that the payment essentially to support those services really only comes from a single entity, in this case, the county and, and the EMS provider. There's, there's not a lot of other dollars that come into providing for these dispatch services here. And I know that's one thing I'd like to see that comes maybe in another discussion at some point down the road, is how do we, with our volunteer situations, how do we make that system a little bit more robust? I know with the outlying areas in particular, like Clamath in your district, Gasky in mine, maybe finding a way to provide or support more services that train those volunteers and providing those EMS services would be potentially helpful as they're waiting for the EMS providers to, to come on site. But I was really appreciative that you brought that up, and one of those areas that to me pointed out some low-hanging fruit that this board could really take a strong interest in addressing.
Into that end, I do know, and I want to thank both the Yurok Tribe and, and Del Norte Ambulance, because they have moved forward and are putting a base in Clamath area that will greatly reduce that, that number time. There's also been discussions and talks about having training to be offered to tribal members to train their person, their, their individuals that are interested in pursuing a medical career in becoming paramedic certified, which again, if we can get more people trained and they're willing to provide emergency medical services, whether it's, it's on the fire department or whether it's on the ambulance, that is going to be a benefit to the entire community down there. And, and the efforts that have been taking place over, now over, over a year now, to bring this to fruition has been appreciated by me, because that has been a need in that community, Clamath, for a long time, and to reduce those, those response times. And it became real critical over the period of time when, when last chance was reduced down to, we had two, two signal lights just to get into town, and that, that hinders response. But kudos to, to the Yurok Tribe and to Clamath for, for putting the resources together to try to get a solution to some of these problems that were reported out in this, in this report that Endpoint put forward. And I want to thank North Coast EMS for, for shining a light on a lot of this so we can hopefully take some, some effective action going forward. The other thing, and I just have to say this real quick, is it's hard to put yourself in the place of what dispatch, the stressors that have to deal with. I've lost, in my period of time, there are two dispatchers, because one dispatcher was, was responding and handling a call for an officer shooting. The officer had been injured, and, and she was just hanging on as, as response units are arriving to try to get some information back. And the stress of that call and the emotional toll that it took on her, she could not continue on with that job. The other was the dispatcher taking a 911 call that turns out to be a family member under a medical condition, and she had to talk her, her own family through the process of, of this person suffering a heart attack and having to be resuscitated and waiting for an ambulance and medical to arrive. And that call ended her career. Because again, it, it, it puts such an emotional stress and strain on, on these individuals when they're having to deal with these things, and they cannot personally, you know, traverse the lines or cover that time. And, and it becomes too much for one person to do at times, and, and we've lost good, qualified, amazing personnel over the years, because that job is, is tremendously stressful.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nancy and John, I just had one small question about call volume. In 2024, Del Norte Ambulance reported to us that they ran 5,123 calls, but in the report, it only says that there's 4,546 calls for call volume in 2024. Do you have a, any idea why there's a discrepancy there?
Yes, Supervisor Short, thank you for that. Del Norte Ambulance did not give us their private inter-facility calls or their calls that are privately arranged outside of the 911 system. So they might have a total, a higher total call volume when they include those, but the 911 calls are the ones that we researched.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. Yeah, and to the, to the comments about this process not being needed, I think from seeing this report and the recommendations that Endpoint has discovered, coupled with the responses to the survey at the end, kind of shows that we are on the right track by, by going through this process. So thank you, Nancy and, and John for being here, and Mr. Karsted, our Executive Director of North Coast EMS, and the lovely lady sitting next to him is Pam Mather. She's the contractor that kind of oversee in the EOA process for North Coast EMS. Appreciate you guys being here and supporting this process as well. Okay. Well, if there's nothing else to add...
Well, if there's nothing else to add, uh, John, Nancy, do you have anything else you'd like to round us out with?
No, just thank you very much for your time this morning. We appreciated getting the opportunity to learn more about Delnor County EMS system and look forward to continuing to work, um, with you all as we move forward with this project.
Great. Thanks so much for, uh, bringing this to us. And Larry, anything to add before you go? You're good?
Good.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for all that, and we are going to move on to general government items.
Okay.
Okay. This brings us to item number 14. Uh, number one, introduced by title only, the Delnor County Assessment Appeals Board Ordinance. Number two, waive further reading. Three, set a public hearing to adopt the ordinance on August 26, 2025. And number four, designate the clerk of the board to prepare a summary of the ordinance by publication as requested by county council.
So moved as read into the record by the chair.
A little second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, I will close that. Uh, any other comments?
I, I just want one clarifying, um, under the section nine, the conflict of interest. I, I do anticipate that there'll be some conflict of interest because we're just such a small community. Um, I'm just curious if that needs to be expanded a little bit, um, to include what type of interest in the property or anything like that? Or is this standard conflict of, for me, conflict of interest, um, guidelines?
Uh, it's kind of standard language. Um, any, I mean, as you guys are aware, sitting on a board, um, anybody who sits on a board has to go through the conflict of interest training where they're going to details about what it, what it means. Um, it, we could put all those details into the ordinance, but, um, I don't think it makes sense because, I mean, you could have an endless list of examples. Uh, that is one of the reasons, um, why there's five members total is so that in the anticipation that there is those conflicts, we'll have two other people who are able to sit, um, because, uh, an AAB board only sits as a panel of three when they're, um, hearing an appeal.
Okay, great. That was my only question is that I anticipate that somebody's going to know somebody that's going to be related to somebody. And so I just wanted to make sure, I, I forget, I realized that having the five with just the three will have two alternates at all times. So thank you for that.
Great. No other comments? Tony?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes. Item 15. Delnor County Board of Supervisors acting of the, acting as the Board of Directors of the County Service Area, number one, approve and authorize the Community Development Director to sign the agreement with Elk Valley Rancheria, California, on behalf of the County of Delnor, approving the transfer of six existing prepaid sewer connections from Green's property to Tribe's Martin Ranch property as requested by the county engineer.
Thank you for taking this item up. During a time when there were very restricted connections, uh, and there weren't any more sewer connections to be had before the wastewater treatment plant was upgraded, um, these connections were very valuable, and the board laid down the rules so that we could transfer, uh, these connections from one to the other. We've been working, uh, very closely, uh, over a number of years with Elk Valley Rancheria, and this instrument that we're modifying today is basically how we're tracking the available connections that we've assigned to them for the Martin Ranch property for future development. They've invested quite heavily in the, uh, CSA, County Service Area, into the sewer system, so we've awarded various connections over time. They're no longer using the old Elk Valley Casino at 2,500 Allen Hill Road. That facility is still in existence, but it's not being utilized in any significant capacity. So the tribe requested that they transfer six connections over. This does leave some connections with that existing facility on the Green's property. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
About how many connections?
Uh, I believe that there's three in reserve there, so.
Okay. So in case there were some future development in that area and have plenty of service.
Yeah, and, and our code allows us to go back and evaluate at any time. So if we see water, if we were to go and say, oh, hey, there's some new development going on here, we could go back, look at their water consumption and say, hey, you only have three connections on the property. What you're actually using is five, so you need to pay for a couple of extra connections and those, uh, associated user fees as well as your, uh, connection fees to the city.
Yeah. I know there was a time, um, a couple of years ago where we had discussions about a mental health facility potentially located on that property that would, uh, service not only tribal members but, uh, countywide. So, um, hope, um, glad to see that there will be something behind that leaves their options open to do some economic development projects.
Okay. No other questions from the board? I'll open a public comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board.
I'd move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. That Supervisor Wilson's for the second. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Tony?
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes. Okay. Item 16, budget transfers. I'll read these into the record. Uh, number 16, approve and adopt budget transfer 06-13 in the amount of $195,905 within the administration budget for fiscal year 2024-25 to cover salaries and benefits as requested by the Administrative Programs Manager. Number 17, approve and adopt budget transfer 06-14 in the amount of $70,000 within the 130-521 Bioterrorism Preparedness Unit to cover increased salary benefits and indirect costs due to rollover extension funding becoming available mid-year as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services. Number 18, approve and adopt budget transfer 06-17 in the amount of $7,473 within the Community Development Administrative Budget Unit 101-260 to cover salaries and benefits as requested by the Director of Community Development.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve budget transfers 06, 13, 14, and 17 as read into the record.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any public comment on the budget transfers? Seeing none, I'll close that out. Tony?
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Starkey?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Short?
Yes.
Chair Borges?
Yes.
And then, uh, last placeholder on there is for legislative budget issues. Anything anybody wants to bring forward in there? Seeing none?
Let's just keep paying attention, and I was, um, glad Supervisor Short is listening to the RCRC, potentially heading back to DC on SRS, so, um, pay attention to that. That's a, a big one. And I know there's willingness on both sides of the house, so there is some alignment possibility there. I just hope, uh, they get moving on it soon. That's a big piece of our, uh, budget.
Okay. And with that, we will adjourn.